I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wilmette Public Schools, District 39 for Monday, April 24th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling.
Here.
John Cesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Well, Principal Dana Nasiakos is here to introduce Mackenzie students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Board of Education. I have the pleasure tonight of introducing our Leadership Council members and teacher advisors, Colleen Mooney and Gwen Faulkner.
Hi, I'm Gwen Faulkner. As Mrs. Nasiakos said, I'm one of the co-leaders of Leadership Council. Last year, we took our school-wide Student Council and we transformed it into Fourth Grade Specific Leadership Council to really give these fourth graders, the experts of Mackenzie, a role and a place to shine and really help with the functioning of our school.
I'm Colleen Mooney, the other advisor to Leadership Council, and we just have to give a huge congratulations to these kids because they are truly amazing. They are leaders at our school and they do so much for Mackenzie. So without further ado, let's hear a little bit about their role.
Hi, my name is Ada. Leadership Council is made of a fourth grade leaders who have been nominated by their class to represent all the Mackenzie Cheetahs.
Hi, my name's Sam. As Leadership Council members, we work together with our teachers, principals, and PTA to make Mackenzie a great place to learn now and in the future.
Hi, my name is Jacob. One of the big jobs we do is being called a cheetah in charge. On our scheduled day, we go down to the office and help kindergarteners get to their classrooms. We also help with deliveries to the classrooms. Another thing we do is organizing the paw pride certificates and delivering the final lunch count.
Hi, my name is Liza. We also selected kid before lunches for the menu and everybody has loved the new options we've added.
Hi, my name is Robbie. Last year's Leadership Council wrote a grant to have solar panels installed at Mackenzie. And this year's Leadership Council is planning a celebration for the Mackenzie community to celebrate Mackenzie's solar panels.
Hi, my name is Owen. Another thing we have done is working with the PTA's volunteer group, Lend a Paw Coalition, on Project Linus, which is a day of service led by Leadership Council and the PTA making blankets for children in the hospital.
Hi, my name is Valerie. Coming up, we are continuing our volunteer work with the PTA by collecting and sorting books for Bernie's Book Bank to help children who don't have access to books.
Hi, my name is Shelby. As members of Leadership Council, we've all learned that as fourth graders, we are the oldest in the school. So the younger grades look up to us and we have to lead by example.
Hi, my name is Ashley. We also know that at High Crest, we will have more responsibilities. Being a part of Mackenzie Leadership Council has given us the opportunity to practice and prepare so we are ready for even more leadership and even more independence at High Crest.
We hope you enjoyed learning a little bit more about Fourth Grade Leadership Council at Mackenzie. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, thank you so much for stepping into this role of leadership at your school and for taking the time to come and tell us about all the important work you're doing at our meeting tonight. This is truly the highlight of our meeting and we love learning about what you're doing in your schools and we see the leadership you're going to offer wherever you go next. Maybe it will be as school leaders or board members in your future, you never know. I want to give you a small token of our appreciation as you leave. So I'm going to meet you at this door and hand something to you as a small thank you and then you can meet your families in the lobby. But congratulations again and thank you. Parents, thank you for being here and for raising such outstanding young boys and girls for us. Okay, the Ramona students created the vibrant artwork on display in the boardroom this month. First graders created their personal versions of Vincent van Gogh's Starry Night scenes with their own imaginary cities dusted with swirling night skies and moons. Second graders studied Alma Woozy Thomas and created watercolor backgrounds with painted mosaic paper collages. The third graders studied sunflowers and geometric shapes to create their sunflower still life art using oil pastels and watercolor washes. Fourth graders studied Henri Matisse to develop sketches and shapes to create their large, thick, black ink self-portraits. At this point, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2023 Regular and Executive Session Meetings. I move to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2023 Regular and Executive Session Meetings. May I have a second?
Second.
Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions? Okay, all those in favor say yay.
Yay.
All right, motion carries by general consent. And this brings us to an opportunity for the community to speak and share anything with the board on any topic. Okay, we will move along with board reports, starting with Mr. Panzika and Facility Development.
Thank you. At this week, at this month's Committee of the Whole, the Facilities Committee had a presentation from Mr. Bickler, the project manager at Nicholas and Associates. He gave us an update on the 2023 summer projects. The good news is things are moving along on schedule and a little bit better than they have in the last couple of years. The necessary equipment's been ordered and the lead times appear to be a little shorter and more dependable. Related to that, the Mackenzie Air Conditioning Project, which was targeted to be done in August, was completed in time for the recent, I won't say heat wave, but warm wave we had a couple of weeks ago. So it gives an example of what it's going to be like when we have air conditioning in all of our schools. So the update is things are relatively on schedule in this uncertain time and moving forward.
Great, thank you so much. School finance, Mr. Cesaretti.
You and President Paling. So we had a number of items we discussed at the meeting. And I'm going to start with student fees. So Mr. Boltmeyer provided 10 years of financial history for program fees up for review. The program fees to be determined for 2023-2024 school year included fees for instructional materials, lunch, transportation, and athletics. Lunch and transportation fees have been highly impacted since the COVID pandemic. Budget deficits for each fee category were provided along with information regarding increased costs for food, fuel, and labor costs for cooks, bus drivers, and coaches. Mr. Boltmeyer provided scenarios with multiple options for the various fee increases. Members discussed the board's historical philosophy regarding fees and noted each fee carries a quality of service. It was noted that food and fuel costs drive inflation and tying the fees to consumer price index, CPI, is transparent and consistent with the economy. Families who wish to utilize services such as lunch, transportation, and athletics would pay directly for each service or choose not to participate. Financial aid would be available to families that meet financial criteria. Next, we discuss transportation. Bus contracts with North Shore Transit are up for renewal. The ongoing issue regarding the lack of bus drivers continues. Cost increases are due to fuel liability insurance, new buses, as well as salary benefits for employees. Regular transportation will increase eight and a half percent and special education transportation will increase 10 and a half percent. The state reimburses the school district up to 80% for special education transportation costs and only $5,000 for regular transportation. District 39 subsidizes 35% of transportation costs. Members agreed to continue service with North Shore Transit. We also discussed student technology repair fees. Mr. DeMonte provided an informational report regarding the repair fee structure for electronic devices. The district has a four-year rotation with iPads that includes Apple Care. Apple offers different types of Apple Care coverage. Mr. DeMonte reviewed the history of claims and how the new structure lowers incident costs for families. We also discussed a bond proceeds transfer resolution. As we all know, the district recently issued working cash bonds, which were deposited into the working cash fund. The purpose of the issuance of the working cash funds was to utilize the funds for summer construction projects. Resolution is presented for approval this evening that allows moving the funds from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund to cover summer construction costs. That was it, thank you.
That was a lot, terrific, thank you. Mrs. Schneider-Fabes, strategy.
Yo. We also met during the Committee of the Whole last Monday. The district continues to address the many focus areas contained in our strategic plan goal. During the Committee of the Whole, Gaby provided an informational presentation and shared a few updates by highlighting the work in the areas of math and reading. That included reading instruction in the primary grades, professional learning about reading instruction, K-4 math curriculum materials review committee, and the professional learning about math instruction. And that's it.
Perfect, thank you. So for liaison reports, I will start with CRC as I was able to go to that meeting. They met on April 11th and as a large group, they reviewed in extensive detail the draft of the report, which they will present at our May board meeting. So really excited to receive that and the amount of work they have put in is extensive. So they will meet again on May 9th to review and vote on the report and then we'll hear more about that at our meeting. Mr. Cesaretti, Educational Foundation.
Yeah, I was able to go to the Wednesday, April 19th Education Foundation meeting. It's actually a good group. I, they have a lot going on. They've been raising money and giving GRIP grants. And the highlight was Kelly Jackson doing the presentation on the impact of one of the GRIP grants with mobile furniture. So it was great. They have, so they had a very successful family movie night on April 14th and they plan to have a very successful cheers and beers event this Friday, the 28th, at Double Clutch Brewery.
What was the movie?
It was Mario Brothers, I believe.
Thank you. And Mrs. Kim, IASB.
Nothing much to report there. They're sort of in the, focused right now on onboarding all of the new school board members so this month and I can move on to legislative items.
That'd be great.
Yes, not a lot to say there as well. The General Assembly was on hiatus for a couple of weeks and they just sort of started back up again last week. So then most of the stuff that we're looking at is still in committees and so I thought I'd hold off a little bit until it kind of moved up and then I'll bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping an eye on all of that for us. Dr. Crimiscoli, I'll turn it over to you for information items.
Thank you, we have just a few today. First of all, under written communication, the board received communication from Cheryl Sundheim inquiring about the Cub Scout PAC 8 from Harper School and the Pledge of Allegiance at one of the board meetings. Under administrative announcements, as the board knows, we recently held our spring parent-teacher conferences. They were quite a success. Thank you to everyone who participated in those conferences. Our teachers and parents seem to really enjoy connecting with each other. You'll remember that this time around, we use Meet the Teacher as the platform for conferences. We did allow for the opportunity for in-person conferences for those who requested it, but the vast majority used Meet the Teacher and we met with quite a bit of success with that. We are troubleshooting just a few things and we've appreciated everyone's feedback on that so that we can make some improvements before we use the system again in the fall. We're really confident that that will ease some of the burden and the logistics of conferencing, especially at the 5'8" level in the fall, and we look forward to continuing down that path. Again, we appreciate everyone's continuing to build those relationships between home and school as we partner together to support our students' learning. In terms of staffing for the upcoming school year, planning for the 2023-2024 school year is well underway. We've had quite a bit of interest in our open positions and are making significant progress toward being fully staffed already for the upcoming school year. This is quite an achievement, especially when we've looked back at the last couple of years where we struggled a little bit more. We are just really pleased with the applications and the interest in our positions. We filled our math interventionist positions at the elementary level as well as many of our special education and other teaching positions already for the fall. So we're really excited about that and I will tell you the candidates and the interest, the caliber of the employees we're hiring and placing are just outstanding. So we're really appreciative of that. We do have a few key positions still to fill, but are ahead of typical progress at this time of the year thanks to our school teams, our building leaders, and to Dr. Heather Glawacki for their leadership in all of that hiring. I would like to make a few notes. First of all, we are expecting a little bit lower student enrollment. The board will remember this from our recent review of enrollment projections over the next year. And this does impact some of our staffing. There are a few elementary grade levels that we are closely monitoring where enrollment does not yet necessitate that fourth section at a grade level within a school. We'll continue to really closely monitor that. Often, we make decisions to adjust before the end of the school year and sometimes even over the summer as students come in to enroll, but we are keeping a really close eye there. Additionally, we're monitoring and evaluating our staffing needs elsewhere, including at the 5th through 8th grade level. Lower enrollment coupled with the strategic plan goal and commitment to examining class size in non-home room classes is resulting in a few possible assignment changes for classes in grades 5 through 8. We're still in the early stages of making staffing decisions for the upcoming school year, but we wanted to highlight that approach and the priorities as we are implementing staffing for the upcoming school year. In addition, we do need to reduce the number of occupational therapists for the upcoming school year. So later in the agenda, you will be asked to vote on a resolution which will reduce the number of occupational therapists by one staff member. We recognize this is an uncomfortable process for everyone, but we also recognize the responsibility to staff with our students' needs as the highest priority. So we will be recommending that resolution to the board later on this evening's meeting. On another note, we have been very busy hiring for the new principal of Harper Elementary School and I'm really pleased to introduce to the board this evening our candidate of choice. We've completed a really rigorous screening and interview process to select the very best candidate for this important position at Harper Elementary School. We were incredibly impressed by the candidate pool throughout the process. This position garnered tremendous interest from many experienced, knowledgeable, and enthusiastic candidates, both from within our district and well beyond our district boundaries. And we're thrilled to introduce the candidate of choice to you this evening. Let me tell you just a little bit about her. We are pleased to announce Mrs. Jackie Brennan will be recommended this evening to the Board of Education to be the new principal at Harper Elementary School. Jackie has been a valued member of both Harper and District 39 communities since returning to Wilmette two years ago as assistant principal at Harper and we are excited as she transitions into her new role. In addition to nurturing positive and supportive relationships with teachers, staff, students, and families as an assistant principal, many of you might know that Jackie has also played a leading role in the school foundations team, the MTSS team, and the instructional leadership team at Harper School. As part of this work, Jackie collaborated with teachers and staff to analyze and support student performance data and growth and has really served as an integral member of the comprehensive safety protocol at the school as well. She's been a tremendous support to our special education students and staff and really a positive influence at Harper Elementary School. Prior to serving as Harper's assistant principal, Jackie began her career teaching in the Chicago Public Schools for five years and then as a fourth grade teacher here at Central Elementary School in Wilmette for several years. Jackie then transitioned to administration as the assistant principal at Scammon Elementary School on the northwest side of Chicago and then returned to us thankfully at Harper a couple of years ago. We're really pleased to have Jackie stepping into this new role for her and we are confident in her abilities and we know that she'll continue to have a tremendously positive impact on our school. So, Mrs. Brennan, thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, board. I'm incredibly excited and honored to be named the next principal at Harper Elementary School. I've loved the last two years that I have spent as the assistant principal there and I've worked hard to establish strong relationships with my students and staff and families and I truly look forward to continuing that work to push Harper students forward in the years to come. Thank you so much for this honor, I'm really looking forward to it.
We'll see Jackie's name on the personnel report later in this evening's agenda for approval. And then finally, Freedom of Information Act requests. We've received three and processed three over this past month. Vince Espy of Local Labs requesting District 39 current mission statement as well as previous mission statements. Karen Garcia of Smart Procure submitted a FOIA for all current staff employee contact information and Sherry Reed of Smart Procure submitted a commercial FOIA for all purchasing records from January 24th, 2023 through March 17th, 2023. And that moves us to annual business. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll start first with the December 1 child count. I believe Dr. Swanson will speak to this.
Yes, so each year, the Illinois State Board of Education collects information from all school districts on December 1st. This is called the December 1 Child Count and they use the information to track trends. It's used for funding. It's information that we review as well to just see where we are as a district. It provides a snapshot that allows a year-to-year comparison. Interestingly, the data is as of December 1st, but they spend the month of January, February, and March correcting and making sure all of that data is accurate. So our December 1 Child Count reports have been pushed back further and further every year. The child count for this year indicates that we are very similar to what we've been in the past. Our enrollment, our children with IEPs has gone down slightly in relation, similar to our general overall enrollment. We continue to have approximately 15%, 15.38% of our students have IEPs at this point. The state of Illinois is listed as 17%. So we're a little bit below that, but trends that we're going to continue to monitor. Does anybody have any questions?
The next two updates are from our business office and the board spent quite a bit of time talking about those at our recent Committee of the Whole meeting. I'll let Cory speak to those.
Thank you. The first item is the student fees. So later on, the board will be considering approving all the fees for the 23-24 school year. This is a three-page document. I just want to highlight a couple of areas that we talked about and are working to adjust for next year. On this document, any of the areas on the far right with the blue are the areas where we've targeted for an adjustment for the 23-24 school year. The first area is the instructional materials fee, which is, you see all the increases around 7%, which mirrors the applicable CPI factor for next year's, next school year. Then as we go further down the page, we have the lunch fee and we're looking at a 10% adjustment for the lunch fee, putting the lower grades at just below $5 per lunch and the other, 7th and 8th graders at just over $5. Then transportation fee, we are looking at a 14% increase. It should be noted that the cost of our contract is, we're looking at about an 8.5% increase in the rates that were charged by North Shore Transit. Even with this adjustment, this would still put the fees collected or projected fees to cover about 65%, which means that the district's operational funds would be covering the remaining 35% to provide this optional service that transports a little over 1,000 students every day. And then the one last area that we had some conversation and are looking for adjustment is in the area of athletics. And the targeted adjustment is for a 5% increase across each of the individual sports. And with the adjustment, we are projecting that this would bring the existing deficit to nearly break even as things stand right now. So as I said, we, as noted earlier, we had some pretty good discussion around a lot of these topics. So if there's no questions, I can move into the transportation contract renewals. All right, so for both our regular and special ed transportation contract with North Shore Transit, we have reached a point by school code where we can extend, we have the option to extend with them for one year at a time. And for the, on the regular transportation side, we are looking at an 8.5% increase for one year. And on the special education side, we are looking at a 10.5%. Couple of things to note as it relates to the renewals. The last three years particularly have been really challenging in the, like, the school busing industry, particularly as noted, if we went back three years, they've adjusted their compensation in the neighborhood of 33% to continue to attract drivers. From our perspective, I would say that that process has worked as we've not had any days where we get calls and we're not able to bring kids to school on time because drivers are sick or they just can't find enough drivers. So they have provided a really high-quality service to D-39. Not to mention the, many of the other areas that have seen high inflation over the last few years. Fuel insurance, both liability and medical for their employees, plus the cost of purchasing buses, which you can delay a little bit, but at some point, you've got to continue to replace that fleet. So while we know that the increases for this next year are higher than what we've typically seen, we also know that there's a lot of factors playing into those increases. And then the last item that's for vote later this evening is the abatement resolution to move the $11.2 million in proceeds from our bond issuance from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund. The working cash fund was, the money was deposited there because that was the type of bonds that were issued. This is a procedural step to abate the money over to a capital projects where the district will then spend it on the previously approved air conditioning projects this summer. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thanks, thank you for that. You know, I-
You know, I said this at the committee of the whole meeting, and I just wanted to reiterate that before I was on the board, I didn't know much about school finances. And when I would see bills for, like, student fees or anything, like, I just, you know, well, I figured that that was the cost of things, and I didn't realize how much the school was subsidizing all of these, you know, programs. And I'd even heard that it was, you know, that the, that the fees that the parents were being charged was like, you know, profit generating. So anyways, thank you so much, and I am really appreciative of the district for picking up so much of these costs.
I was not at the committee of the whole meeting last week, but I did listen to it, and I appreciate the extensive dialogue about these costs because some of them are significant, and it will be interesting to see if that does have an impact on ridership going forward. And I just wanted to voice my support for the idea of, you know, clearly communicating to the families exactly why the costs are going up, and the fact that the district does continue to cover some of these fees and will going forward. So I thought that was a great idea, and it really, I think, helps when you see the numbers come through to have that information alongside.
Thank you. I too thought the conversation was really thoughtful, and I appreciate the board, every member contributing to that conversation, really taking seriously that fiscal responsibility that you have of balancing the care that we provide and services we provide to our students and families alongside the need, the needs that exist. So thank you for that thoughtful discussion, and I would encourage anyone who is looking to learn more to, to listen to that committee of the whole meeting where there was quite an in-depth review of the fees and the recommendations and the board's consideration of those fees. We are in the process of putting together some information so that on Friday, when we share out our, our update, as we typically do within the principal newsletter, we can link to some of that information so that families who are interested might be able to learn a little bit more. We know that not every family will be interested, but certainly making that information available could be helpful to some. So thank you for that suggestion, Bonnie. Okay, then we have the S.R. 3 grant application, and again, Dr. Swanson will speak to this.
Yeah, so the S.R. 3, part of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, was a grant that was issued, was one of three grants issued by the federal government to support school districts in the wake of the pandemic. This is a multi-year grant. It started in the 2021, 2020, 2021, 2022 school year. And this, we will be entering, this next school year will be the final year of the grant. So I was just going to give a brief sort of summary of what we've done and what we plan to do with it, with the funds that we were allocated for the remaining year of that grant. Some of the things that we funded, as you may remember, where we used funds to pay for summer school teachers for the review and reinforcement program. We provided after-school social-emotional learning clubs. So I think Ms. Jackson shared information about that at the committee of the whole or maybe at the last board meeting where she talked to, and students came and shared some of the clubs that they were members of. So those were all new clubs that were developed as part of this S.R. funding. We've had some summer curriculum writing to work on social-emotional learning to help support our students as we work with our students who really returned from the pandemic with, with some significant needs. These are things that we are going to continue. We've talked earlier about continuing to provide or to use some of the funds for the review and reinforcement teachers again this summer. We are continuing with the clubs. We have lots of students who have been engaged in those clubs and have really found them very valuable, and we are continuing with the summer writing projects this summer. We use a lot of money for professional development, and we were able to really engage in some professional development that's really cohesive and consistent and allows us multi-year implementation, which really helps with stability and maintaining. This is part of the school culture. We did a lot of work with responsive classroom training. We had all of our district staff trained during one of our institute days, and we are continuing to train staff members to become trainers, to be able to make sure that we are able to continue this work even beyond in the coming years. Similarly, we've done six days of the foundations training so far, and that is our peer-one behavior system, and we will be doing more training next year for both foundations and responsive classroom. We've used the funds to do diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development as well as coaching and differentiation. So all areas that we are really benefiting from this additional funding that's allowed us to really dig in in some of these core areas. We've done parent education activities. Those, we will be continuing. We've been lucky that many of them have been at low cost to the district, and we will continue to use those, and we're reallocating some of those funds to support some of the other areas as we move forward and to purchase intervention resources. A couple of things that we've completed is we have shade structures at all of the buildings. I hope everybody's had a chance to go out and see them. They've really been a great addition to our, our learning and have provided opportunities for students to engage in outdoor learning, which was one of the few silver linings from the pandemic, as we learned how much we liked that. We did the varsity tutoring program, which provided a number of our students opportunities to participate in an online tutoring program. And then we used, we used some of the, allocated some of the initial funds for Zoom. What we have determined is that Zoom is really an important, like, long-term platform that we will continue to use, so that will, in the future, be rolled into local, our local budgets as opposed to the grant funding. But that's just sort of an update on where we've been and where we plan to keep going. I think that we're very excited with the opportunities we've had for professional development with these funds. Does anyone have any questions?
We have board policy reviews up next. This is the second and final reading of board, of the Board of Education policies. A couple of notes that I'll share on behalf of Dr. Galakki in our review. This is the second reading of these policies. There was a question on Policy 4:140 regarding needing an "or" after the number 1 in the enumerated list. The "or" is only needed after number 2, as a student could be eligible for a fee waiver if they meet the criteria of 1, 2, or 3. In Policy 5:120, there was a question regarding why Board of Education members were removed from the list of employees needing to file a statement of economic interest. Policy 5:120 references employees. So because board members are not employees, they have been removed from this list in 5:120. However, it is stated in Board Policy 2:100, the requirement for board members to file a statement of economic interest. And finally, in Policy 4:165, in the first paragraph, number 4, the quote, "and grooming behaviors," end quote, has been, has been unstruck. For board discussion. Okay. Any questions regarding any of that? Any further thoughts or questions about these policies? Yes.
I have one question for my own education, and that is Board Policy 7:190, if you refer to page 6 of 7, where it says, "Though isolated time out may be used by our therapeutic school partners consistent with the Illinois School Code," who are the therapeutic school partners?
So when we have students for whom we are unable to provide a free and appropriate public education, we may contract with a therapeutic school, therapeutic day school, or potentially a residential facility in order to provide that. So they are, is be approved. We work very hard to keep our students in our districts, but there are some students for whom we are not able to educate.
That location?
Yes.
Anything else, board members? Thank you for all of that. This is another opportunity for public comments. Are there any community members who wish to speak? Okay, I'll proceed with the consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like polled? Okay, Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated April 24, 2023. I move to approve the student fees for the 2023-24 school year as contained in Exhibit A of the report. I move to approve the regular and special education transportation contract renewals with North Shore Transit, NST, for the 2023-2024 school year with a fee increase of 8.5% for regular transportation and 10.5% for special education transportation. I move to approve a second and final reading of Board of Education Policies 4:10, Fiscal and Business Management, 4:140, waiver of student fees, 4:165, Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors, 4:190, Targeted School Violence Prevention Program, 5:20, Workplace Harassment Prohibited, 5:120, Employee Ethics, Code of Professional Conduct and Conflict of Interest, 5:190, Teacher Duties and Qualifications, 5:200, Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal Teachers, 5:220, Substitute Teachers, 5:250, Leaves of Absence, 5:280, Non-Certified Duties and Qualifications, 6:15, Student Accountability, 6:250, Student, or Community Resource Persons and Volunteers, 6:255, Assemblies and Ceremonies, 6:260, Complaints About Curriculum, Instructional Materials and Program, 7:50, School Admissions and Student Transfers to and from non-district schools, 7:70, Attendance Intruency, 7:190, Student Behavior, 7:250, Student Support Services, 7:285, Anaphylactic Prevention Response and Management Program, 7:290, Suicide and Depression Awareness and Prevention, and 7:340, Student Records. I move to approve, to release to the public the executive session minutes for September 19, 2022. I move to approve, to maintain as confidential, the executive session minutes for the following dates: September 12, 2022, October 24, 2022, December 5, 2022, January 17, 2023, January 23, 2023, February 27, 2023. I move to approve to dispose of executive session audio recordings pursuant to District Policy 2:20 for March 22, 2021, July 20, 2020, December 7, 2020, January 11, 2021, January 25, 2021, February 8, 2021, March 15, 2021, April 19, 2021. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between March 21, 2023 through April 24, 2023 in the following amounts: Educational Fund, $401,895.81; O&amp;M Fund, $86,738.53; Transportation, $210,717.78; Capital Projects, $594,845, for a total all funds of $1,294,197.12. I move to approve the manual checks issued between March 21, 2023 and April 24, 2023 in the following amounts: Educational Fund, $846,67.57; O&amp;M Fund, $151,740.25; Debt Service, $3,253.67; Transportation, $62,511.82; Capital Projects, $24,139.41, for a total all funds of $1,087,712.72.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paley.
Yes. Liaise have it, motion carried. I seek a motion to approve the resolution for the resolution authorizing the reduction in force of educational support personnel linea beatur.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing reduction in force of educational support personnel linea beatur and authorize notification according to the requirement of the Illinois School Code, Section 10-23.5.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paley.
Yes. Liaise have it, motion carried. I seek a motion to approve the resolution for the resolution abating the district's working cash fund.
I move to approve the consideration and action on a resolution abating the district's working cash fund of $11,204,302.1 from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Paley.
Yes. Liaise have it, motion carried. Okay, are there any comments from the audience pertaining to the reorganization of the Board of Education? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Mark Steen from Willmett. First of all, I want to say it's really a pleasure to see so many familiar faces, and it reminds me of how much fun and enjoyment I had working here for a long time. Folks in the back as well, thank you. And then, of course, as always, I want to say thank you to both the administration and the staff, and then the current board members for all of the services you provide. But one reason I got up tonight is because I wanted to say a special thank you to Frank Panzika, who will be going off the board tonight. Frank, you are an incredibly community-minded individual, serving in your church and the Boy Scouts, and of course, serving the district for eight years now. During your tenure on the board, the district has successfully navigated a number of challenges and done so while meeting the constantly changing community needs, still finding ways to improve its performance, stay fiscally sound, and, most importantly, educate thousands of children. Some events that come to my mind, off the top of my head, both big and small, during the last eight years include setting budget fund balance guardrails, navigating, if you remember, a tax proposal that was fairly controversial in the community, and changing some of the audience comment rules that came as a result of that, creating a kindergarten enrichment program, a change in, I believe, every principal in the district and every district executive position, except for, and I'm going to count this one, Nancy's, untold late nights hiring a new superintendent, and negotiating multiple teacher contracts, navigating COVID, both the closing and the opening of the schools, and all of the things that came in between those two, creating a new strategic plan, of course, more construction projects than any of us could possibly count. You have served on many committees as a member and as a chair, and you have served as the board vice president. Frank, you started on the board when your son was a district student. Now he's moved beyond new career. So you've demonstrated that your commitment to this community and to this district go well beyond your most direct family interest. You have been a true public servant, as a colleague for six of your eight years, and to the degree that I can say so, on the behalf of the community, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Steen. Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't see any other community members here, so at this point, I invite any fellow board members to share comments prior to reorganization. Separate. Other board members? Other board members.
I am not going to be as good as Mark.
That's why I'm letting you go.
Uh, but yeah, I have a great pleasure playing here. It's been, uh, maybe six years. Yeah, it's fantastic. And, um, I think from a personal perspective, you were very helpful in my adjustment to being
Frank, on my, uh, my son's first day at Mackenzie, you were the only person I remember seeing on the blacktop in your Cub Scout uniform, trying to recruit people, and you got him, so. But, um, and you have always been so kind and and shared your knowledge about things at Mackenzie and then when I started here on the board. And I have really appreciated working with you these last two years. Thank you.
Anne, go ahead.
Um, I'll just quickly add to that. Frank, you have given eight years of service within unwavering dedication to preparing our students in the nature of life. On the level of commitment to the role and the District 39 community of truly admirable. And in addition for, in addition to my gratitude for all you've done for District 39, I'm also personally grateful for your support. As I thought about running for the board, as I campaigned, and in the past, um, two years, as a new board member, you've shared your time, your experience and your insight and you're very generous and you made a real difference to me and helped me develop as a board member. So I wish you all the best and I thank you for being that and you've both been a great person.
Frank, I don't know that I could add anything, but so I'll, I'll put it to Amy for a second. Being board president is not easy. And I think that you were amazing. You did it with grace and class and were incredibly effective. And so I am, I'm grateful for your leadership.
I will echo what Lisa said about you. It's been an honor to be your vice, have been your vice president. So Frank, I hope you're just not going to mind me sharing this story. I'll get to the board service in a minute, but my favorite memory of Frank. So Frank's son, Adam, and my oldest child, Elizabeth, went through Mackenzie together and they were the same age. And I think it was the summer of, I want to say 2011, after they had finished first grade. The Panzikas hosted, not an impromptu, but something where invitations went out and great planning went into a food fight in their backyard.
Oh, I love it.
And my daughter's hair smelled like macaroni and cheese for a month after. My favorite memory is of Frank manning the hose in his backyard to help kind of calm down the mess that had been made. And just that kind of forbearance to do something that would give children so much joy. I think your, I already knew you before that, your stock went from high to even higher at that event. I just think about the last eight years and the amount of time and dedication you've spent working on behalf of children, the amount of committees you've been on, the amount of meetings you've gone to, the amount of decisions that you've had a big role in making, and the, all the volunteer work you did before that. I mean, you were on the Ed Foundation, you were on the CRC. And it's no small thing to put in that kind of time and commitment on behalf of children. And I just want to thank you for, for giving that of yourself.
I'll jump in here if I can. I want to say congratulations and just a huge thank you for your eight years of service. You have contributed so many, in so many significant ways to your community and to the children of our district. I have always been struck, like other people have said, by your generosity of your time and your willingness to step up in any and all roles. That's been asked of you, leading committees, being vice president, the district strategic advisory team, the COVID metrics advisory, representing the board on negotiating contracts, and so much more. When we were asked, you always say yes and with your full heart and attention. And personally, like others have mentioned, I'm incredibly grateful for when we ran together four years ago, your warmth and your mentorship and encouragement. So you have certainly had a huge impact on so many and I wish you all the best. Say a few more words, is this where, still comments prior to reorganization? Okay, so I just have to say that I have learned so much in the past two years and I leave this role feeling profoundly grateful. First of all, I'm so grateful to this board. I think we're really lucky. You are all some of the most dedicated and thoughtful people that I know. You come to every meeting fully prepared, which takes more than most people are aware of, and step up into all the needs and roles that we ask. I've leaned on every single one of you in the last two years and couldn't have done it without you. I can't look at Erin. When we've been faced with difficult decisions, which we have had many, you each advocate for what you believe. You listen respectfully to what other people have to say and support the decisions that are made. I think that's pretty unique and something to be celebrated. To the administration, teachers and staff, you make our district what it is, an inspiring learning environment that promotes empathy, respect and belonging. You have such depth of expertise and professionalism from everyone at this table to the teachers and staff in our schools. With everything we have faced, with every lofty goal we pursue, you put student learning and wellness at the forefront. It has been the greatest honor for me to lead the board of this district. And to carry, I don't really have the words to express appreciate, my appreciation or admiration. Working by your side these last two years, I have been blown away time and again by your leadership. Your ability to guide us through complicated issues and processes is unparalleled. You see things from every angle and help frame the decisions we need to make so thoughtfully. And mostly, the care and respect you show for the students and parents and staff is limitless. I'm so thrilled for the future of our board, but I will deeply miss working so closely with you. Thank you for indulging me. And that.
Thank you so much, Amy.
Seriously. You set the bar.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Amy, for your kind words and to the entire board for your sentiments of appreciation and all of your hard work. Tonight's about Frank, so we have a few words to share about Frank and then a presentation of artwork as is customary in our district. We have a beautiful piece of artwork to share. On behalf of the administration, our staff, our students and family and the Board of Education, Frank, we want to thank you for your commitment to serving the student, staff and community of Willmet District 39. Frank, throughout your term, you have been laser focused on improving student achievement, especially growth, and in serving the needs of all students. You've supported us in the use of metrics and in ongoing regular monitoring and reporting of progress. Your commitment to ensuring that each and every student learns and grows every day has served as a guidepost for our work and will continue to for many, many years ahead. Frank, you have provided steady and focused leadership throughout your term. Most noteworthy for me has been your steady and focused leadership throughout the pandemic as a member of the metrics reopening advisory team. We spent many, 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 many mornings together. Wherein you helped us to maintain a focus on the board's priority of reopening schools to in-person instruction as quickly as possible and to the greatest extent possible, while also ensuring a safe and supportive school environment along with a commitment to health and safety protocol. Thank you. Frank, you have also provided critical leadership during really significant times. You led us in academic growth, advancements in curricula, substantial facility improvements and continually, continual financially responsible decision-making. You've always been willing to ask the tough questions and to dig deep on issues of importance to you. We've appreciated and benefited from your leadership and we thank you tremendously for your service. With gratitude and appreciation on this, on behalf of myself, our administrative team, our staff, our students, families and community, our Board of Education and the entire Willmet community, it is my honor to present a piece of really beautiful artwork to you this evening. We have an amazing artist and high crease sixth grade student here to present artwork to you. Marle, will you please step up to present Mr. Frank Panzika with your artwork for this evening? And thank you, Frank, for your many years of service from 2015 to 2023 as a board member.
Thank you.
Eight years ago now, um, when I started this journey, four to eight years seemed almost like an infinite amount of time. Now I look back on eight years and it went by very, very quickly. I think this is a very important role and I think it's very important that people step up, as you all have, to give your time to make this a wonderful school district and to continue to make it a wonderful school district. I will miss this opportunity. I was driving here today and between these meetings and meetings I've gone to, been 13 years that I've drove down Willmet Avenue and turned on Locust to come to these board meetings, one form or another. So it's a big part of my life and I'll remember it fond. Thank you to everybody that I've worked with, um, school board and administrators and people on the back table. Thank you again. You're leaving, Tom?
Well, I, I will start by saying, inasmuch as there's no further business to come before this board, I seek a motion for adjourn, uh, adjournment CNA DA is in order.
I move that we adjourn CNA DA.
And second?
Second.
I don't know, sorry, Frank.
That's okay. I was going to say as my last act, I was going to.
Yeah, but take it back.
Take it back.
I'd take it back, Frank.
So as my last act, I second that motion.
Motion having been made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying yea.
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 And we are adjourned. I hereby call to order the reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education of the Willmet Public Schools District 39 for Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. I seek a motion to appoint a president pro tem.
I move to appoint Dr. Kremis Goli as president pro tem to lead this portion of the, of the reorganizational meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any objections from the board having Dr. Kremis Goli serve as president pro tem? Hearing none, Dr. Kremis Goli is appointed president pro tem by general consent. Thank you. For the record, I have the official certification of the April 4th, 2023 consolidated general election as canvassed by Cook County Clerk Karen Yarber's office. Allison Papless, Amy Palin and Erin Stone are the winners for District 39 Board of Education members. Would you please come to the podium to recite the oath of office?
Hi, say your name.
Hi.
Hi, Erin Stone. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. A member of the Board of Education. A member of the Board of Education of Willmet Public Schools District 39. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the laws of the State of Illinois. To the best of my ability. I swear that. I swear that. I shall respect taxpayer interests. By serving as a faithful protector. Of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect. I shall encourage and respect. The free expression of opinion. By my fellow members. By my fellow members. Of the Board of Education. Of the Board of Education. And others who seek a hearing before the Board. While respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member. I shall recognize that a board member. As no legal authority. As an individual. And that decisions can be made. Only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions. I shall abide by majority decisions. Of the board. While retaining the right to seek changes. While retaining the right to seek changes. In such decisions. Through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education. I shall accept the responsibility. I shall respect the responsibility. Accept the responsibility. For my role in the equitable and quality education. For my role in the equitable and quality education. For every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board. I shall foster with the board. Extensive participation of the community. Formulate goals. Define outcomes. And set the course for Willmet Schools District 39. I shall assist in establishing a structure. I shall assist in establishing a structure. And an environment. Designed to ensure all students. Have the opportunity to attain. Their maximum potential. Through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure. A continuous assessment. Of student achievement and all conditions. Affecting the education of our children. In compliance with the state law. In compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate. On behalf of students and our community's schools. To advance the vision. For Willmett Public Schools. I shall strive to work together. With the superintendent. To lead the school district. Word fulfilling the vision that the board has created. Fostering excellence for every student. In the areas of academic skills. Knowledge. Citizenship. And personal development.
John Sees ready? Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez.
Yeah.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Thank you. The next item of business is the election of board officers. I seek nominations for the office of presidents.
I offer Erin Stone to be nominated as president.
Erin Stone has been nominated. Are there any others? Seeing none, Erin Stone is board president by acclamation. Congratulations. You can hand over the gavel if you would like. You might even be able to change seats, I'm not sure. Do you want to change seats or you want to just stay where you're at?
That's coming.
Go ahead, okay. You're the new president, Ms. Stone.
I seek nominations for Vice President. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, Anne Hart is Vice President by acclamation. This is the part where this half of the table is going to move.
For those following along at home, we're actually physically in-person moving our seats right now. You might not be able to see it at home, but that's what's occurring in person here.
It's a reorganization.
Anne, are you logged in?
I mean, it looks like Anne might have accidentally been logged out.
In District 39, the superintendent serves as the appointed secretary and the business office manager serves as the appointed treasurer for the Board of Education. Are there any objections to Dr. Kremiscoli serving as the board secretary and Corey Boltemeyer serving as treasurer? Seeing none, Dr. Kremiscoli is appointed secretary and Corey Boltemeyer is treasurer by acclamation. Moving on to information items, Dr. Kremiscoli.
Yes, we have under annual business, the proposed Board of Education meeting calendar. We've provided to the board both the meeting calendar and the committee of the whole calendar for the upcoming school year. We hope that everyone has had the chance to review that. We've made a few adjustments based on some of the dates and holidays and expected interruptions. As we know, there is every once in a while the need to reschedule a meeting. And so we provide proper notice for that when that happens. But otherwise, that is provided to the board. We also are providing to the board the board policy, which is recommended for approval this evening as well. The entire policy book gets approved every time the board reorganizes.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Moving on to yet another opportunity for public comments and for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll continue with our agenda. The board needs to approve District 39 policies and Board of Education meeting calendar for 2023, 2024. I seek a motion to approve the adoption of the Willmett Public School District 39 Board of Education policies and administrative guidelines and procedures.
I move to approve the adoption of the Willmett Public School District 39 Board of Education policies and administrative guidelines and procedures.
May I have a second? Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Sees ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. I seek a motion to approve the calendar of dates for regular meetings of the Board of Education and to set the location of the regular meetings at the McHaleian Center, the McHaleian Education Center, 615 Locust Road, Willmett, Illinois 60091.
I move to approve the calendar of dates for regular meetings of the Board of Education and to set the location of the regular meetings at the McHaleian Center, the McHaleian Education Center, 615 Locust Road, Willmett, Illinois 60091.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Sees ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes, both motions carry. At this point, do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Ms. Kim.
Welcome, Allison.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Any other new business? Ms. Schneider-Fabez.
Are you board officers?
Thank you.
And welcome.
Any other new business? Any good in welfare? Seeing none, I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations and specific personnel.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Sees ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabez.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session and the time is 8:20.